I can't hear.
Yeah, Jean, if you can hear us, we cannot hear you on Zoom any longer.
How about them?
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me? Yes, I see that. Great. So if you're on Zoom and you wish to speak this evening, please go to the bottom and raise your hand and then you'll be put into the queue in the order in which you bring your hand. Thank you. And if you're in this room and you wish to speak, there's a sign up sheet right back there. And please sign in. And I will open hearing now. So again, welcome to everyone here in Town Hall and those of you on Zoom. I'm Jean McPeters. I'm the Chair of the zoning Commission. Again, if you wish to speak, just come over to me and sign in on the list by the entrance. If you're attending by Zoom, raise your hand via Zoom and we have to keep the list in order. We're going to call on people in order according to the number of people on the list in Town Hall with hands on the list in Town Hall and with hands raised on Zoom. So for instance, if there's 10 people on the list in Town Hall and 20 people on Zoom with their hands raised, I'll take two for every person I take in Town Hall. There. The speakers, they only speak once and you have up to four minutes to speak. Bruce is going to be our timekeeper. He is setting his thing on his phone right now, I think. Yep, four minutes. The zoning commission is also very much welcoming comments in writing. You may leave them with the town supervisor. If you're not coming with me tonight, you can bring them to the town clerk to be compiled for the zoning commission members. You may drop them off. You can send your comments by mail. They have to do a postmark or drop it off on March 3rd. Please do not applaud or call out remarks in order, our remarks tonight in order to allow the speakers to be heard. We should be able to hear about 40 comments tonight and applause will let our ability to hear more speakers. The meeting is being recorded. The zoning commission members are Michelle Brown, who is on Zoom. Ernie Vales, who's right over here. Barbara Pugh. Bill Murray. Bill Pedilka, who is on Zoom and myself. Councilman Tim Murray is the liaison from the town board to the zoning commission. And is on Zoom this evening. Town supervisor Mark Whitner is here and is operating the computer and running the virtual system. I see Cal. Hello, I'm Stella. This is here. One of the other council members and my, there are probably other council members on Zoom, but I can't see them that far. I have, so is there anyone who signed in over there? No?
Yes.
Okay.
Three, yeah.
So yeah, I'll just ask the first person to come up and when there's more, we'll take more. Take this to be the first sheet, I guess. And can someone tell me how many hands are raised on the Zoom?
I didn't count any the last time I looked at.
Okay. So we will start with John Morse. John, you can, you can sit there or you can come up here. If you stand up here, people on Zoom will be able to see you.
Maybe at some point, this isn't really part of my thing, but can you give us an idea of what the steps are that still need to happen in this process? Cause there's been a lot of people that maybe don't quite understand that yet. So maybe at the end.
We, we will not, we are not going to reply to these things this evening, but at the end of the meeting, when we finish, I will tell you the rest of this.
All right, John Morse. So I want to start with a quote, "Our local land use policies are the most restrictive in the nation. Through zoning, local communities are able to hold enormous power to block growth. Between full bans on multifamily housing or owners zoning and approval processes, they make it difficult, almost impossible to build new homes. So with less supply, demand drives up prices and who gets squeezed? Young families starting up, middle in income and low income families. You can't get even, you can't even get a starter moment. This is an end quote. This is from Governor Kathy Hochul as she fights restrictive zoning in New York State. Couple key phrases here. Through zoning, local communities are able to hold enormous power to block growth. Owners zoning and approval processes make it difficult, almost impossible to build new homes. So with less supply, demand drives up prices and who gets squeezed? She's talking about housing here, but these exact statements carry forward to businesses as well. Businesses like ours. A little guy cannot afford an extra 20% or even 5%. I'm getting started. We had a plywood sign, a two by four railing and our parking lot was half filled with gravel when we opened and we had no dollars left. Your zoning plan, like all others in rural towns, will reduce the supply of built blocks for homes or businesses. And add cumbersome approval processes. Creating opportunity for favoritism at unneeded design regulation, create a need for monitoring enforcement and much more. All of which add costs and will do exactly what Governor Kathy Hochul stated by squeezing out the less financially privileged. One size fits all is the future airline of this past. When zoning, we say zoning discriminates, if it already happened here in Carolina. When we pushed out the Dollar General in favor of someone's ideal view of what should be on that piece of property. We hurt those who would benefit from that store the most. Of people who might even choose to work there. What's it by? Zoning is simply not needed in Caroline. We've had no growth for 30 years. And only 26% growth in 190 years here. We don't need arbitrary increase in cost. You know, the last thing our residents need is an arbitrary increase in cost is they plan their dream house or business. An arbitrary increase in cost is horse and bunnies are gone. People drive further and want a home in the country. Urban sprawl is happening. Businesses want visibility on the right traffic roads. Route 79 is a perfect location to attract small businesses and it's already commercial. 5,000 vehicles a day, 400 trucks a day. Drive up Route 79. If you, if you drive up Route 79, you have storage units, a solar array, a large apartment. And then an empty field that's not even suitable for farming and then a giant billboard. But somehow that field in that zone, sandwiched in between all those commercial properties is designated inappropriate for commercial development in this, in this plan. Really? People moving here to build know that Route 79 is a busy highway suited for commercial use and they want to build on a quiet back road. But when we look closely, some of the names that live in that area, we understand why it wasn't allowed. Zoning's original scope was to keep dangerous industry, chemical plants and oil fields out of residential areas. It is used in city planning to make sure that the correct infrastructure is in the right spot, four lanes of traffic, et cetera. None of that stuff is needed in Caroline and therefore it's not in here. This is 137 pages of self-righteous ideals, creating a sanitizing effect, bringing homogenized suburban housing to Caroline. It's 137 pages of not in my backyard videos.
Thank you, Ms. Morse. I'm going to take it written in here first and then we'll have somebody from Zoom. So Lauren Morse is next.
Hello.
Hi.
So I didn't really prepare anything, but when I came in and you said, you know, I hope you're speaking, we're listening. So I decided to write down a few words and I hope you guys are listening. They've been saying the same stuff over here. We don't feel like people are listening. But you know, everybody here, you know, they, they spent a lot of money for apoppy. There's a lot of regulation already in place. We have, you know, the health department, the code enforcement in New York State, Army. We don't need more regulation. Zoning really limits the American dream. It limits small businesses. It limits people coming to the town and you know, doing their dream and building a house. We're all in the country for a reason. And we just don't need more regulation. And I just want to say Caroline's strong, Caroline proud and those zoning needed, we do not need zoning.
Thank you. The third speaker is Anna Wadine.
Guys, don't really have anything prepared, just a few things is we don't want, we still don't want zoning. We still don't think we need zoning. You know, last year when I came and talked to you guys and stated that my family's been here for like seven generations, doesn't come with just saying nothing. It's that our families have been here and served this town for generations. My parents met in the fire department. My grandpa was on the board. My grandma ran the cemetery. My great-grandpa was a judge right here for 15 years. And we've worked this land hard and tirelessly for all of our lives. And that this does not mean that we think that we, we should have more rights than others. And I'm, I'm quite tired of people putting those words in our mouths. It's just, it comes with so many feelings that I can't even describe to you. But I, I think zoning is the most unwelcoming thing I've ever really heard of. I don't understand how it's anyone's business who who comes here. You know, I don't like the people that live here saying, well, I don't want so-and-so coming here. Well, what does it matter to them? What about, I mean, what makes them so special that they should be here, but, but they're special enough to tell other people that they can't be here? I just don't like that. It's, it's unwelcoming and I, I want to be welcoming. I want to be a good neighbor. So yeah, thanks.
Thank you. We have one person on Zoom who has a hand up. It's Rebecca DeWitt. Becky?
Oh dear. Okay. I guess I better start over. I'm sorry. Could you hear me?
Oh, not around.
Okay. All right. Sorry. Well, I'm starting over. My name is Becky Dewitt. My husband and I live in, have lived in Caroline for nearly 25 years and we chose Caroline because of its rural character, its beautiful forest, open fields. We fell in love with the land and the vigorous sense of community we found here. And so we decided to stay. I am saddened by the division and ranker we've all witnessed in Caroline over the past two years. I have friends on both sides of the zoning controversy. It's on everyone's minds. I hope we'll find ways to remediate the divisions over time. The very word zoning has become a lightning rod, but really it's a tool for a community to make basic decisions about the community's future. A zoning law can be as restrictive as Nantucket, where I'm told the buildings must be built with strict aesthetic standards and conform to a certain shade of gray. Or zoning can be loose as a plan like the one proposed in Caroline. With all due respect to the very first speaker, you know, I, I feel like this plan could be a lot more restrictive than it is. At least that's my viewpoint. There are different viewpoints, of course, and not everyone feels this is loose. But what I'd really like to say tonight is what I like about this plan. The proposed Caroline zoning law does a great deal to protect our environment. Wetlands protection is very important to the future of the globe. The plant materials found in wetlands produce as much oxygen as some parts of the rainforest. And the riparian zones help clean our water. I believe that solving climate crisis starts at home, in our homes and in our towns, et cetera. The second thing that I really like about the plan is that it attempts to control development. It's not trying to keep development out. It just wants to put the brakes on and it seems like they do a good job of you know, blending open space with you know, commerce and so on. Change is inevitable, of course. It's up to us to decide how we want to shape things for the future. Once commercial buildings are on the ground, it's been my experience that they are permanent. Even if the businesses come and go. Small home businesses are really.
No, go ahead. I'm sorry. I'm saying thank you to someone else. Becky?
We can't hear you.
Becky, did you?
Probably it runs here.
I think, I think the Zoom is frozen at the moment.
My recording was stopped. Am I still able to speak or am I done?
30 more seconds, Becky.
Okay. I've been really pleased with the process. I really think that the zoning commission has gone out of their way to conduct open meetings, to give people a voice in the process and to be transparent. And so I, in conclusion, I wish to thank the members of the zoning commission and current town board members for their thousands of hours of volunteer work on behalf of Caroline. I observed myself as they worked through the draft, one line at a time. They did an amazing job and I am grateful for their commitment.
Thank you, Becky. Your time's up.
I support this plan.
All right, Becky, the time's up.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. I think we'll take one more from Zoom and that will be Renee Farrell. And then we'll come in and have Taj Williger and Holly McGee.
I'm not able to un, start my video for some reason. But that's okay. I guess I can just speak without you seeing me. There we go. Maybe not. Okay, I'll just speak. Hi, everyone. You know, I've spoken many times throughout this process in support of the very thoughtful and really truly amazing cooperative efforts that have, we've all witnessed over more than a year, many years, actually two years or more. And there is something that actually came across my interest, which is actually just a question and a point that I'd like the commission to actually look at more closely. It's in table one, commercial and commercial accessory uses. As you all know, I've been an artist for many years. You know, I, I don't like to call it a business. It's actually an avocation. It's, it's part of my life. It's who I am. And I've been doing it since we first bought our house in 1980s. This particular question I have is about art studios, instructional spaces and maker spaces actually accord, if, if passed as it is, would need use permits. And I just want to point out to you all that artist studios are oftentimes pretty solitary spaces where people are pretty much making a lot of work, hopefully. And most of that work is probably shipped out or transported out to other places and spaces around the county, around the country, and perhaps even beyond. Instructional spaces, I presume, what you mean by that are maybe schools. And I think that this maker space is very unusual and surprising to me. I mean, my own students had maker spaces in an urban center where they were actually creating entrepreneurial ventures. So I'm, I just think that it's strange that those three things are mapped together. I look at an artist studio like a, almost like a home. I hate to say business, but it is a home business. But it's one that, that really is quite solitary. And so I'm not quite sure what you guys were thinking about when you said that one needed a use permit. I'm not quite sure what's your imagination, where your imagination was taking you. But I would be happy to consult if you would like. I know many artists in the area. In fact, I have two colleagues who just are looking for, for homes in the area because they've seen what I've done here. So I just think it needs a little bit of more scrutiny, I think on, on, on your end, or perhaps I'm missing something. So anyway, thanks again, everyone. I really appreciate just your listening. Thanks.
Thank you, Renee. If anyone has come in and wants to add their name to this list, it's up here and if you're on Zoom and you want to speak, please raise your hand. And the next person is Tom, I'm sorry. Ted, Ted, sorry.
He's not Tennessee. He sent an email to be read. So yeah, this is Ted Turwiler. He lives on Hartford Road. He says what it is like living in a town with no zoning. We're a fifth generation family that's been in farming, have farm machinery. Gentleman farmer, worked and lived here all of our lives. I have worked for the Ithaca City School District for 30 years. The majority of my time at Caroline Elementary School. I decided to take a vacation to Tennessee this winter and the county that I am staying in has no zoning. The community consists of farming, housing developments and a main town with locally owned stores and some chain stores, restaurants, hair salons, hospital doctors, banks, historical society, agricultural food for farmers, McDonald's, Sonic and more. The only building codes are for new housing and septic. Inspection is only for inhabited housing, wiring and septic systems. No building codes for farm structures, sheds. Buildings not used for living. Land use is up to the owner. I came in contact with a councilman and building inspector. The first question was, are you for zoning? I answered no. And he said, as long as I'm alive and the members of this community are, there will be no zoning. New residents are request, are requesting zoning and we voted no. This county seems to be like we were 30 years ago, enjoying life. The people all stop and talk whether they know you or not. Enjoy new improvements to their neighbor's property, give encouraging comments and help you with your projects, just like it used to be. They only pay property tax, no school tax. Schools are funded through the state. It's my understanding, sales tax helps with school funding. I'm told that some principals drive a school bus and they get to know the children. The state has a formula for aid. One important item is student attendance. Sports are very important to all. County and state roads are well maintained, mowing long roads and it looks nice when you come here. The prisoner has prisoners providing help, keeping debris picked up and other duties. This is an example of no zoning at its best. People work together to have a nice community, including parades, get togethers, including food and music. Churches help with activities. Enjoying their land and home and community. You are welcome to each community with the city's name and in God we trust. Have a blessed day. That is what they say to all. No zoning in Caroline, please. Let's enjoy our town. Ted Turwiler.
Thank you. The next speaker is Holly McGee.
So I didn't really prepare anything for today. It's been kind of busy and I just want to say first that the six o'clock meeting is terrible time. I just got off work, had to go home, make dinner for my daughter. Had to come late because I couldn't get it done in time, obviously. Second, I just want to say something about the rural character of Caroline. I've looked for the definition of rural character, haven't seemed to be able to find a definition. So I'm thinking it's more like an opinion. So why is it that five people get to determine what the rural character should be and remain of this town? I'm trying to figure out what that rural character is or what you think it is or what you think it should be. That's, that's an opinion thing. So I just don't understand why your opinion is better than the rest of us. That's that. And then you know, where I stand on zoning, don't want it, don't need it, don't think it's necessary, think it's an infringement on our property rights. And that's that. Thank you.
Thank you, Polly. The next speaker is Veronica Hippo. Is there another, I'm looking for your hands. I'm not again, I think it says, that will be the next speaker.
Am I supposed to stand someplace?
If you can stand over here, that would be helpful. Thank you. Yep.
So thank you for the opportunity. Is there a timeline?
Four minutes.
Okay. First of all, I'd say that let's step back and take a look at what Caroline is like. We're a small town. We have a very small population. We, the town has a small budget. We have a small staff. And we have almost flat growth in the population. Very, very low growth. This plan, I printed out the whole thing, the 146 pages long. It's a monster. It's difficult to understand. It's difficult. It will be difficult to it will be expensive to staff and enforce. And it is completely out of step with sort of the structure of the town. I mean, I think that in organizations, you need the bureaucracy to reflect essentially the size. Now, the federal government has a big bureaucracy at the big organization. The state has a big as you go down, they need to be proportional. This is completely out of proportion with the needs of the community. The other thing is if you, if you do do zoning, there's three things in my mind that it should be. It should be easy for the people to understand, which this is not. It should be easy to enforce, which this is not. And it should be easy for the community to accept. And given what's been going on for over the last year, it's very obvious that the community, a lot of the community is not accepting it. And I do think that there is another way. And it's interesting, the iterations of the zoning plan as it's gone through. I was looking in this and now a lot of the density requirements you've done away with. And except for in the agricultural area. What I find it interesting is every type of residential is allowed out of right. With the exception of Boysville Cottage. Everything else in the town, every housing option in this town would be allowed out of right, except what I built at Boysville. And one of the things, I just find that kind of ironic. And so if you take this, and what's also ironic is when I built Boysville, I had to get, except for the first nine I built, I had to get site plan approval. I had to go through a site plan approval process that you already have in place to get my approval to do that. And so now you're building this monster. Incredibly huge, complicated regulation. And essentially you're, from a residential standpoint, you're virtually where you were when you started. And biggest area that this does, it layers on incredible complex regulations on businesses. A lot of businesses will be affected. So the, the give and take and the change of the business structure and how businesses work and how people work is going to be tripped off. It's going to be tripped up all the time. And what I would say is there's an easier way. If you took the subdivision regulation and swept more of the business activity under those subdivision regulations that you already have. You could then end up with a regulation under the current umbrella to deal with virtually everything you're trying to deal with. Under the current umbrella to deal with virtually everything you're trying to deal with. In a much less complex way. Much easier to understand and enforce, and much easier for the community to accept. And I think it's a good way to go for it. Thank you.
The next person who raised their hand up on Zoom is Megan. Megan? Will get muted.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Can you identify yourself, please?
Megan Burke. Caroline is a great town as it is. It certainly does not need discriminatory structures such as zoning. Zoning is a force that's actually been responsible for many of America's worst problems. Environmental problems such as increased reliance on cars, segregation of communities, and the affordable housing crisis. You know, just pick up the New York Times, it's very clear, America is moving away from zoning. New York and many states are trying to actually repeal the power of towns to zone. So why is Caroline moving in the opposite direction? You know, Caroline's a wonderful place as it is. I think zoning is the antithesis of its spirit and. You know, I also think that zoning in Caroline is being driven by outside interests in the county and FEMA, and that's really sad. Thank you.
You. I don't see any other names on my list. Does anyone else here this evening want to speak, or anyone else on Zoom? Come up and please pick the names on my piece of paper. I haven't finished all two of the things, but I. Whack up a couple. And. And then I see Emily Adams. After you. Okay, so Edie. Edie and then Emily.
Where do you want?
If you can stand right up there, if you just look at the camera.
Oh, I didn't even realize there was a camera there. Okay. Don't ignore it. Okay. My name's Edie Spalding. And you know, I've been in the area for, for a couple of days, and I have a couple of questions. Number one, I know we spoke about the Dollar General in the past. And I really don't understand why the site. Where they wanted to put it. Won't work. Is in the building right down the road. There's a number of apartments in the old barn and plus the. There's a business that's already in the building where the builders work. And so that's already commercial there. Why is it a problem having be the Dollar General there, which would be another commercial? Store. I don't know if you've been in one, so you might want to pick a gander into one of them and just see what all they carry. The shirt makes it nice to have to run all the way into town. And the other point was code enforcement officer. The current code enforcement officer evidently can't handle the work that's already in the town. As you go down Caroline Depot Road, there's two places down there now. That has, one of them has a shed parked really close to the edge of the pavement. Which is, I believe, is a county grove. I'm surprised that somebody hasn't swapped onto that. Then right up the road. There's a trailer that. I'm not sure exactly what all they do to the vehicles, but I believe that they're dismantling the vehicles there. At least that's what I've been, what I've been told. And there's a number of unlicensed vehicles at that particular property. And if he can't handle these kinds of things, how is he going to? Do more? Other than giving more hours? Which with more hours comes increased pay. And I don't think that it's really fair to the people of the town. To have to pay for something like that, and he's not even taking care of what he's supposed to be taking care of already. Those are my main thoughts. I haven't read through this lovely document yet, but those are a couple of points, and I still don't think we need it, and I don't know why. It's being rammed out of. I am not for zoning. Period.
Thank you, Edie. The next speaker is Emily Adams. And Emily needs to be unmuted.
Yes, hi. My name is Emily Adams. I want to say that I actually agree with quite a few people who've spoken before me about the dangers of zoning. In fact, I do agree with Kathy Hochul that, that zoning has created a lot of trouble for low income people to be able to find housing. I know it's been used in discriminatory ways in, in many communities. It's probably caused a lot of damage over the years in our, in our nation. But. My perspective in this situation is that zoning is, is a tool. It's a tool that can be used badly for bad intentions by, by people who are just plain old greedy, or, or whatever you want to label them. But it's also a tool that could be used for good if you use it carefully. And. I think in this case. From what I judge from what's come from our zoning commission. The tool is being very precisely tailored to suit our community. Not involving any drastic overreach that I can see. I'm, I'm happy to hear. I've been listening for a long time to hear if there is a specific. Thing and a specific article, line, paragraph, whatever, that would be too restrictive. In our zoning draft, not, not zoning in general, but our particular zoning draft, what would be bad? And I saw some things that I didn't really like in the beginning. Because I am a small business owner and I was worried that there would be restrictions, but I don't see those there anymore. I was a little concerned about ADUs being restricted. Because I have an ADU from my father right next to our home. But there's no restrictions on that. In fact, it's named as a thing that they want to encourage with this zoning plan. Tiny homes, modular homes. Dense homes, more like dense communities like Boysville, as I understand it would be encouraged because we all. Support having affordable housing options for people, as long as they're like, you know, some environmental concerns are, are weighed in there. Make sure that people still have clean water and so forth. Another thing that I was a little worried about the zoning law in the beginning was, would it restrict me from having chickens? Because you hear about that all the time, that, that urban zoning keeps you from having your chickens in your yard or something, but it's not there. In fact, it says. Zoning, in ours, particular zoning situation, it would be allowed everywhere. Everyone can have chickens, and I'm thrilled by that. Also, I, you know, I was a little concerned about. This thing causing taxes to go up. But the more I've looked at it, the more I, I've been unable to find. Any guarantee about that. I don't see that there's any guarantee that, that. You know, property values will go up for. Maybe for some people, they might go up a little bit more than for their neighbor. So then their taxes are going to go up a little bit more compared to their neighbors. But if everybody's value of their property goes up, then, then nobody's taxes go up. Because the costs are the same for the community. Salaries for some employees might go up, but I haven't seen, I haven't been convinced by that because. Extra things that like a code officer might have to do. For a big project. The, the developer for that big project pays for that, not the average taxpayer. It doesn't get shared, that expense doesn't get shared to the whole community. So I really, I don't see any specific. Problems with this tool as it has been outlined and developed by our own local zoning commission. I think this is a tool being used well. And while I fully admit that it has not been used well in other places and other times in the past. So, so far, I, I don't see anything not to support about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. And the next speaker, black speaker I have on the list at this point, is Tommy Danham. But if you want to speak, please come up and add your name.
Normally, I try to prepare something, but I like the Ethel Holly sentiments about this being an inconvenient time. I gotta work, I gotta go home, shower, eat dinner. It's not very good for a lot of us who are homeowners and jobs. So somebody prepared anything, just a few things off the cuff that have been a huge concern for me with the initial draft. I haven't gotten to review this. Draft fully, as much as I would like to. But. What I look at is all of the existing businesses in Caroline, and the fact that we've actually lost a lot of businesses in Caroline. And you look at the businesses that do exist, and you look at how, whether or not they would comply with this zoning draft as written, and pretty much none of them would. So, if we expect to expand small businesses, I'm not talking about Dollar Generals here. I'm talking about places like Thorfinn's Market, Lashers. I'm talking about the library, where the coffee roasters are. I'm talking about all of those local businesses owned by local people. Who might want to develop a new business, have a site where they can possibly have a building of X size. And having to comply with this zoning regulation is going to make it extremely expensive, difficult, time consuming. And create a lot of hurdles for them. The other aspect that I'm looking at is where are we going to get the money out of the town? To create the oversight that this kind of zoning would require for our community. We have to have some kind of committee overseeing everything. We're going to have to increase the code enforcers' hours. I would like to hear how exactly the proposal is for going forward if this were to be implemented. The other thing that I've looked at with this is just. How it impacts low income people. And I look at the fact that nationally, it is being recognized that zoning has caused a huge amount of problems. Discriminatory problems, hurdles for low income people and homeownership, home business ownership, et cetera. And. We're sitting here saying, we want to implement zoning at a time when there's national recognition, even at the level of the White House. At the problems zoning has created. And if you do a Google search, you will see. So many communities are backpedaling their zoning. They're reducing the limitations of zoning. And they're reducing lot sizes requirements. And when we look at a three acre minimum lot size, to me, that's kind of horrific. I think Boysville is a tremendous community. It's an asset to our community. I love the fact that people have this walkable neighborhood where there's multiple units. I live right by it. And it doesn't bother me in the least. If we have three acre minimum lot sizes, I don't understand how that's not going to spur on suburbia. Suburbia is McMansions, sitting on three acres and three acres and three acres. So the lot size minimum is absolutely appalling to me. I don't understand that one at all. And I guess that pretty much sums up what I have to say today.
Thank you. What do you have, Emily?
Yes, I'm sorry.
It's from six to nine. It's okay to be here, so.
Meeting by drop, some call. Want to change as a commission members?
Yes, but is there something that you wanted to reconsider, or is it what you're gonna say?
Well, I'm gonna read it, but I also want.
If you were just gonna need to write, then I got it. And is there anyone else on Zoom who wants to raise their hand? See.
Hey, how's it going? I'm all done.
There's some errant audio. Someone can mute themselves, but also Cyrus has now raised his hand, Jean.
Great. We'll have Cyrus after Pete. So Peter, are you gonna go ahead and read this out?
Peter, I'm all my effort.
Yeah.
I had to miss everybody here. When here, when I'm in mine, it's all the same.
Ethan Anderson.
It's unbeatable. I want this. I want this to be part of the record, please. That's why I gave y'all some of it. There is much coverage in the zoning commission's final report. Of its efforts to keep the public informed of its ongoing work. And the various information here tells throughout the last fifteen months. However, there's no mention made of the persistent, consistent, and widespread opposition to this commission's work. Therefore, I suggest the following language. Being inserted into the final report to the town board. In the section titled Public Participation in the Finding Process. Either near the beginning of it at the top of page seven, or near the end of it near the top of page ten. And here is a statement. From the beginning, there was significant and vocal opposition to the work of this commission. Many residents felt that zoning was not needed in the town of Caroline. And resented what they felt were infringements on their autonomy as property owners. Others recognized the need for some controls, but were opposed to a one hundred and thirty page zoning law that grows overkill. Particularly objectionable to men was the inclusion of water resource overlays in the zoning apps. With restrictions within their boundaries that exceeded those required by the federal authorities. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Cyrus, who is on Zoom. Cyrus, will you give me your last name, please? Once you're. Cyrus, I think you can now speak.
Okay, thank you. I was trying to unmute before and I couldn't. This is Cyrus Sumrigger. And I am strongly in favor of zoning because I think it's needed to preserve the character of this town that we all love. You know, both the people who are for zoning and against zoning, we. We appreciate the character of Caroline. We'd like to preserve some of that. I think a lot of the opposition to zoning is based on a misunderstanding of the zoning law. As Emily pointed out, there are bad zoning laws and there are good zoning laws. And to the great credit of the zoning commission, they've put in an enormous amount of thought into how to do it. So that it would benefit everyone. It's certainly not gonna hurt the poor. That's a complete misconception. There is another misconception that was stated today is that there's a three acre minimum size. That's not true. People said that we haven't had zoning for more than a hundred years. Why do we need it now? Well, I've seen other places, places that were very rural for decades, and then suddenly, things changed. And now you can go for miles and it's just suburbia. So you know, the fact that it hasn't changed in the last hundred years doesn't mean that it won't, it won't change in the next ten years. There are many more things I could say, but. I want to keep it short. I don't, don't want to keep everyone here for the full three hours that, that is allocated to this meeting. I'd just like to say thank you to the zoning commission. And I, I want to say also that they've been very responsive to the objections that have been raised, and they have tried to address those. And so I understand that a lot of people are concerned about the extra time and the extra money that it would take to. To do new developments. And my belief is that the zoning law is really there to keep out a very small number of undesirable developments. And the vast number of things that most people want to do in this town. Will be done with minimal time and hopefully no extra cost. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Cyrus. Do I have anyone else who wishes to speak?
Can I go again?
No, we're having one speaker for now. I, we have three hours and we gave four minutes allowing at least four people to speak, and we're only having one speaker. You can submit notes in writing, and you're asking people to do that.
You can submit notes in writing and you're asking people to do that. The point is, we wanted a variety.
You gave us three hours to hear from the public, taken the three hours to hear from the public.
Would you stop? This is a public hearing. It is a very formal process. We have had this back and forth in public meetings and we've gone on a lot in public meetings and answered a lot of questions. This is a public hearing, which is a requirement by law to be a formal process. Where you don't go back and forth, we're not answering questions. There are a lot of things I could respond to tonight, but I'm not. Because that's not purpose of our meeting.
Four minutes.
Bruno, Bruno, you are out of order.
Get Bruno, you are out of order.
Bruno, you are out of order. You don't allow me to send emails. Holly, if you didn't send me poop emojis, I might let you do that.
Bruce, what do you have to say?
I'm just wondering. If you have a three hour meeting, can you tell the people who would like to say something again, why we couldn't hear you?
Bruce, we agreed that this is the last meeting. This is one thing.
We agreed to a three hour.
We agreed, did we vote on that? I don't remember. I remember you saying that we only have one. We agreed on it.
Sir, do you want to speak tonight?
No. Everybody, you could give everybody two more minutes if they chose.
I didn't give my full time, so.
You got forty people. You know, Jean, I've been in a lot of public hearings and people, when everything gets done in their timeline.
Bruno, you are out of order. You are out of order.
I think you're out of order too.
I think you are.
People have been spending years dealing with this. And you're shortchanging the public's ability to comment.
Would anyone who has not spoken this evening like to speak?
Um, I'm, I'm not personally speaking tonight, but I would like to give my four minutes to Bruno.
You don't, that's not how this was.
You have something I can read now? Or is it just?
I don't have a written deck. But I think it would be very valuable for the commission to hear some thoughts that I have. Specific to my circumstance of when I have developed in the town.
Bruno, thank you for that remark.
You all.
Bruno, I would like to hear it, even if it's in writing. I'd go, our own meeting, Bruno.
We also have another one of these meetings, what, next week or something?
Yes, on the twenty eighth. From six to nine P M and everyone will have four minutes to speak again. Does anyone else on Zoom wish to speak? So we're really only here to meet requirements. In order for you guys to implement this zoning proposal and the law. But not to hear people. We have had a number of public hearings, public meetings, excuse me, as I said, will be heard, we've listened. And we changed this document remarkably. Tonight is an opportunity for people to speak, where we do not respond. And as I said at the beginning, and we allocated four minutes per person to allow a wide range of people to speak.
Which you did, but you didn't use up the whole time allowed. So why don't you give everybody a chance to speak for a couple more minutes and so choose? I mean, what?
Especially if it's related to people speaking and they didn't use all the time. It really doesn't make much sense why you wouldn't let people speak.
I mean, that's a good idea. I'm going to take a moment now and talk about the next steps in the process, because I was asked that question at the beginning. What are the next steps? We have two public hearings. The next one's on the twenty eighth at the Brookendale Fire Hall from six to nine P M again. Um, we will then take what we've heard at those meetings and what has been submitted in writing. As I said, we can submit to the town clerk up until March third. Uh, Peter, I will submit yours in writing to the town clerk, so that it's on the record as being submitted. After that, we will meet, the zoning commission will meet. We have the first through Tuesdays in March allocated for meetings, our regular kind of meeting times on Tuesday evenings. We will consider what we said and make decisions about whether we want to make some changes to this draft report that we made. This is a generic report. Once we've made those and we have voted to accept that and move on. We will deliver it to the town board. There are no other hearings after that.
By your permission?
By the commission. Yeah, so it goes to the town board then and the town board, once and then we dissolve as a commission. We are no longer in existence. Once the town board has it, the town board has to deliberate, have meetings about it. They will have to have a public hearing. It has to go for speaker, which is a state environmental control. And they then will vote on it and they can vote it up or they can vote it down. I have no idea how long that would take. That's really up to the town board. Anyone else?
Jean, you, if I could just make a comment, but just very briefly. You, you've had a lot of meetings, you have. This is the first time that the public has had a chance to speak about the, the, the completed draft document. The first time. There's been enormous amount of changes. You want me to distill down, want everybody to still down into four minutes, their comments?
I would prefer you put it in writing, Bruno, which is we've said again and again. Because it will be easier for us all to be clear about if you have a problem with Article seven, section four.
But what happens if somebody gives you more than four minutes and writes that?
You can give me as much as you want.
Well, why is that fair?
See why it's unfair?
Well, why isn't that fair to?
Bruno, we've been trying to. See hours. Allow three hours, allow four minutes. If anybody on board wants to, wants to make a difference, guess what you can? But that was what we agreed to.
Bruce should object.
Bruce, what would you like to say?
I suggest that if we have time left in the meeting, that we let somebody speak again, especially if it's constructive, if it's not.
Your motion is, I hear it, is to allow people to speak at this time, the second time. Do I have second class? Or any second being that? Uh, any other discussion goes on?
Yeah, the, the discussion is that if anybody between now and nine P M. Asked a question on Zoom or walks in the door to attend this meeting, the priority to hear from people goes to the new people.
Thank you.
But also, um, the second round of speakers. Um, are held to a four minute limit and there will be no third round per person.
Is that an acceptable amendment to you?
Bill has his hand up.
I'm sorry to hear.
Bill.
Bill? Okay, I heard that as an amendment, so um, and, and we'll come back to that. Bill?
Uh, it's fine, I was gonna say a couple of things, but I, Barb said some very good stuff there, so I'm willing to just shut up and let her motion be brought forth.
And so Barbara was offering an amendment to your motion. Are you accepting that? That?
Her amendment was that you couldn't speak a third time.
Yes.
And you only had four minutes to say that.
Yes.
And if somebody who comes in, they get the priority to speak.
Right. I suggest that if we have time to go to room more than four minutes, I will have time.
So you're not accepting that part? You're accepting the part that says, um, if other people come in?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'll just add to this stuff, and I would vote if there, I would vote in favor if there's a time limit. But I'm not gonna vote in favor if there's no designated time limit.
Okay. Hearing that, all in favor of allowing people to speak for. Um, a second time and perhaps a third time, allowing other people to come in. Raise your hands and say aye.
I, I'm sorry, um, can we break this up? Because um, I would be in favor of one additional round. But um, sorry Bruno, I don't want to hear you talk five more or four minutes. You know, I, I, I think that stuff should be put in writing. That would be much more effective for us. So Jean, I can't vote yes on this, but I would vote yes on something that had a different set of requirements. So I don't know how to get there, but maybe, you know.
You can't speak for a third time.
Okay. That I think I.
Is there a time limit on the second time, Bruce?
Yeah, I'm the time.
Okay, for four minutes. Okay, so then I think we have, we've been around with the voting this.
Michelle has her hand up.
Hold your hand, I'm sorry, can't see, that's why.
I would like to hear what, what we're actually voting on now. Uh, I think I agree with Barb's amendment. That's the only thing I would agree to, so I would like to hear what we're voting on.
What I hear the motion to be is this, that uh, we allow people to speak for a second time up to four minutes. If people come in who have not spoken yet, we will insert them in the list. And I'm hearing no third time.
No more.
Back to you, man. Okay?
Okay, and, and I, I do just want to point out, you know, again, for folks in the audience that, you know. The zoning commission had decided on a policy for tonight. Jean was enforcing that policy. We are now making consideration to change that policy. Um, you know, but basically Jean was just doing what we said we wanted done tonight. So don't get mad at her.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I, I think we want to make it very clear, we thought there were going to be a lot of people that wanted to speak. And I'm interested in hearing specific comments, not just, uh, we don't want zoning, it's unfair. So if you're gonna speak a second time, I hope we're gonna hear some specifics that will help us.
Thank you. Okay, we have that motion on the floor, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
That passes. So I saw Bruno had his hand up, speak a second time. I saw, hey, Tanya?
No.
Dawn? Anyone else wanting to speak a second time? Anybody on Zoom, if you want to speak a second time, please raise your hand on the room. Thank you. For her time, yeah. Bruno?
Thank you. Couple of things, one is, and Pete spoke about this briefly about the water overlay. And one of the things I would emphasize is the water overlay is a completely unnecessary thing. Because all of the bodies of water are already protected. You have FEMA, you got um, the D E C, the Army Corps. You know, i- i- it's just, it's a completely unnecessary additional burden. And I think it will have quite drastic impacts on people in ways that you can't even contemplate. Additionally, I would say, for instance, in the West Slaterville Hamlet suburb. You do not allow light industrial. And I'll give you an example of the problem. Ben Boynton's Red Barn Cabinet could not be built.
Yeah.
Could not be built. He can't expand, he's expanded since he moved in there, I don't know, twenty years ago or so. He'd done one, two, three, like three different expansions. If that law existed, he could have not have moved there, but if it had come in ten years ago, he couldn't have done any, most of these expansions that he did. My, my question is why? You know, why would you do that? And I, there's, this is just one consequence of this document. And it, that I think you, you can't even begin to realize the repercussions and the snowballing effect and the ripple effect that these regulations will have. Regarding Boyceville cottages and what I had said earlier. When I did that job, I had to get stormwater, I had a stormwater permit from the D E C. I had to get. Public, uh, the Compton County Health Department approval for the subject. I had to get Compton County Health Department approval for the water. All of those regulations you're putting in there right now, I had to already comply with. So, so my point is, but you've added one more layer, as an example. What I've done there is the only area, only type of housing in multifamily in the town, which is going to require a special use permit. And this is where the discrimination, this is where the, the redlining, this is where all this thing comes from. That everybody is fighting against all over the country. Because rental housing as a general rule, it's a, it's a broad statement, but generally, it's less expensive for people than purchasing a house. So people with, usually with less economic means may live in rental housing. But this is a direct attack on the supply of rental housing, because. I guarantee you, if you give the neighbors a re, an ability to say, no, I don't want that field across the road from my house put into apartments. They are going to oppose it. It's not once in a while, they're gonna oppose it every time. Thirty seconds. And so I think that rent, housing is critically important to have it allowed out of right. You got all these other regulations you gotta comply with, the Health Department, the D E C, the Army Corps. All these things are already in place to do the environmental protections and all that. So that's what I would just say, that it is really important.
Thank you. Tom, yeah?
Um, hold on, I think Dawn, I had first, she go ahead. Okay, oh, sorry, Dawn, okay. Um, thanks for, for refreshing me on some of the other things that perturbed me about the zoning. I live in the Hamlet of West Slaterville. I have a barn. When I bought my property, I really wanted to be able to utilize that barn for business. And now I'm looking at possibly not being able to. I already lost one opportunity to rent it to a friend who wanted to have a business there. That wasn't going to comply or fit in with the zoning commission standards for our little hamlet. So he moved on to a completely different community. Um, it would tremendously impact me if I was to be limited or told what to do with my barn. Uh, the other thing is, I am a prime example of a water resource overlay dramatically impacting me. I have a very, very small property and the entire property falls within the water resource overlay. Which means I wouldn't be able to build on my house. I have a three bedroom, one bathroom, one story house that has a stiff panel roof, so I can't go up. The only way I can go is out. I have four kids living in my house and three cats. I'm a single mom, I work my every loving butt off. And I don't want to have to go through a bunch of bureaucracy and red tape, only to be told, no, I'm sorry, you can't, you have, you're in the water resource overlay. I'm a very good example of before that would be impacted. I had a white tooth and nail to buy my property. And if you look at the properties along busiest thoroughfares in Slaterville, on Route seventy nine, on Old Seventy Six. All of those properties tend to be some of the more affordable properties. Cause people with money like to go out into the hills a little more with, build their nice little McMansion. And then the both of us with the modular homes living on the highways are all in the water resource overlays. So we are the ones being impacted. I don't care what anyone says about this not being discriminatory to the poor. The few of us that have been able to buy homes now will be struggling to either add on, to improve our property, to have businesses on our property. And that's a huge, huge issue. That is actually my number one issue that I have with this. And I don't want to be told what I kind of cannot do with my barn. I don't like the idea that I don't know what you guys changed and I'm sorry to get a chance to review everything. But I know that there were percentages allotted to how much outbuilding could be used for a business and it wasn't a hundred percent. If I want to use a hundred percent of my barn towards my business, I should be able to. The parking requirements for businesses, the aesthetic requirements for businesses. All of those are things in the original proposal that I was looking at, like I wouldn't be able to comply with this. So you really need to think about all of those, those fixtures that you're putting on people and the hoops that they would have to jump through to adhere to those. Because a lot of people can't park to the side of or behind when you're sandwiched between a road and a creek. So those are things that needs to be looked at.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to speak? I see Emily Abbott's hands up again, John Kirk, cause I had called you, John and Emily. Thank you. Does anyone else want to speak? I see Emily Adams hands up again, John first, because I called you. John and Emily.
Okay, um, I'm hearing some more things recently that I'd like to to say something to and, um.
Emily. Emily. Um, I had John first, I called him first.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
That's okay.
All right, so, um, specifics about, you know, what's what's an issue with the zoning draft. I mean, you can look at every page and every little detail, but one big specific that I keep mentioning is there's nothing in this for commercial. I I forget the number, but there is literally like 200 feet of road frontage that's not already spoken for in this whole plan for commercial development. And that's our field. Route 79 is commercial, like it or not, whether you live on Route 79 or not, it's already commercial. There should be more advocacy for, G- G and you used to advocate for businesses. Nobody is advocating for businesses in this plan. It's it's 137 pages of, we don't want businesses here. And and we heard one speaker on there mentioning that, hey, you know, everybody, you know, we as a town want X and most of the businesses are okay, so this is okay. Bullcrap. Our dream with that field is not okay in this. And I'm not even going to tell you what it was, but I can take one step of my property and do what I want to do on our field. Just like that, people. This guy's got the privilege, this guy doesn't. End of story. It's for the privileged. You know, so look at the commercial. You're stopping commercial on Route 79. Route 79 is a resource for this town. Sit down with business owners. This whole process, we're we're doing this to maintain the rural character. Who builds the rural character in this town? And maintains it. It's the farmers. And I'm not talking about the guy with a garden in his backyard and a little stand-up front. I'm talking about the people that make a living farming. Sit down with the farmers, because you can't find one that's in favor of zoning. Why is that, that the people that built the rural character and maintain it aren't in favor of this? Are you asking yourselves that question? It's a good question to have a discussion about. You know, Bruno had some really good points that I really enjoyed. This, if if you're going to bring a zoning draft to this town, it should be easy to understand. You guys understand it. You work on this all the time. Sit down with somebody for the first time and put this in front of them. It's impossible. Bring us something easy. You know, bring us something easy to enforce that's not going to cost a lot. Bring us something easy for the community to accept. You won't get so much of this opposition. You know, if you take a look around, a lightweight plant could go a lot farther. You've got Speedsville. Drive through Speedsville. What, if anything, ever would scream to somebody that you need zoning in Speedsville? Nothing. Right? There there should be no zoning in Speedsville. They need any growth they can get to stay on the map. You know, and so we're applying this one-size-fits-all approach to this town. And yeah, you've got your different things created, but you don't need zoning in Speedsville, period. Route 79 is commercial, period. We're not going to see big industry. We're not going to see big development with no sewer, no water in the town. What if a current business sells? And the next guy that comes in, you know, buys it for some different usage that's allowed, but they don't meet the requirements of everything that business should be. Are they going to have to move their parking lot? Are they going to have to add things to get their approval to be a business? Is, are we considering things like that? You know, I had a interesting conversation, I'm running out of time, with a fellow that I don't even know that called me the other day. Just got my name because I'm associated with the no zoning fight. And I have a whole page of comments that this person left me. And they're a Compton County individual who's developed in different towns in the county. He says the smaller guy gets shut out of the game. It's it's going to help keep the wealthy wealthy. It's great for keeping new people up. It's not great for new business.
Emily Adams, now.
So, why are we seeing this? Why are we seeing, uh?
Yeah, someone's hacked in. So you know, I I really would appreciate if whoever has done this would please stop it, you know? I know you feel like you're strongly motivated, but you're not helping your cause. Uh, we are here to hear from Emily Adams.
Yes, thank you. Um. I listening to the last few, um, comments, um, I am I I feel a lot of empathy for people who are clearly like overwhelmed by the length of this thing, which I can totally appreciate. And afraid of what it might do to their own particular life situation. And I get that too. You know, you got a lot of kids, you got a small house, you had plans for how you might be able to, you know, expand and do something else to to make your life a little more comfortable in the future. And then you feel like this thing is going to totally undermine that. And I I get that and I'm I'm sad that it's come to this and I don't know the the best solutions, but I I do think, you know, I'd like to propose that that there be, you know, like a Cliff Notes version of this thing, like, you know, easy reading. And and I appreciate so much already the Reader's Aid boxes that went in, but it's still kind of complex, like, for somebody like me, when I see, okay, my house might fall in a in an area that's called water overlay. And the water overlay means that I need to be careful, you know, around the stream or something. I want to know, like, in practical, real-life terms, does that mean I cannot touch that area? Or does it mean that I just need to talk to the building code person and say, look, you know, I need a shed for my chickens? You know, is it okay if I put it over here? I know it's a water area. You know, what do I have to do? Just put a little buffer? Oh, okay, fine. You know, it's going to cost me an extra $50 to put, you know, some shrubbery or something over there to protect the it, whatever. I need to know in in practical, real-life terms what some of these things would mean to me. And I think if that showed up in a document that's only 10 pages long or something like that, it might go a long way to, um, helping people not feel so ang- so much anxiety over the the changes. And I also think, like, listening to John talk about, you know, the commercial zoning, you know, if there's not enough frontage allotted in the commercial zones as they've been proposed now, I think that's a a reasonable thing. We've got, this is all going through the town board. We're not near the end yet. Somebody could make a specific suggestion, you know, exchange, e- extend the commercial zone in this area to include a little more footage so that we could have some more commercial. I mean, that that wouldn't, you know, that wouldn't turn me off completely. I'm I'm here to find something that works for as many people as possible. And along those lines, I do know people have worried that, um, there would be no dollar zone, dollar stores, and this is all, uh, you know, a lot of restriction placed on, you know, people like me in the hamlet on the whole community. But actually, I don't have any problem with there being a dollar zone, a dollar store, like in Speedsfield, the way it's zoned now. You could put a, oh, do a whole lot of stuff in Speedsfield. It's, it's the the tool of zoning as applied to Speedsfield is very, very, very light, from what I can see in this rather daunting-looking document. Um, again, maybe that needs to come in a little Cliff Notes version of, you know, what does this mean for you if you were to, uh, be part of this new Caroline zoning? Uh, and I think that's the end, what I have to say right now. And I do think that Megan is not doing her cause very much good by putting her personal message over the Zoom. It's it's kind of childish. I do think she should take that down.
Thank you, Emily. Um, I have to excuse myself, but I feel in the suck due to state that I am absolutely appalled at the implications that Emily just insinuated that we're too ignorant to understand the zoning draft. I actually read the original zoning draft three times thoroughly with a bow tip pen. I also went out on my property with a tape measure so that I exactly knew the distances of all of my riparian bumpers and how it would be impacted with everything I was considering. So I'm tired of the rhetoric that we are too stupid to understand the zoning draft. And Emily, that's very insulting, and I'm going to excuse myself now.
Thank you. Uh, I think the next speaker who's handed us our up was Renee, fair enough.
I'm I'm getting some feedback for some reason. I, tonight, am absolutely at wit's end. I've heard many people speak things that are actually not true, that are actually not fact. But further, I am looking at a screen that says no zoning needed. And I would like to ask that this meeting be shut down. Um, unless this particular person actually pulls back and has stops, stops hacking the video. Um, this is supposed to be a public hearing. And I I'm afraid that, you know, it's certainly not that. Um, and I just, I'm just actually appalled, actually, as a citizen of Caroline.
Uh, thank you, Renee. Um, we could close the meeting and restart it, but, uh, we have, since we have, this is a public hearing and it has been publicized as going from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. I don't want to do that. So, um, so I will ask the person to shut the sign off. Thank you. Um, so, I, um, do want to say that, um, there were some things said this evening that aren't true. I will try to put something up on the website that explains a few things that people said this evening. That just are not actually what's in the the thing at all. But I I am not supposed to be doing that tonight, so I will put up a notice, um, sometime in the next meeting about some contradictions that, um, some things that were said that just are not true about the side of the dots, for instance. So, um, I see iPhone has its hammerish, I guess. iPhone, I don't know who you are.
And if iPhone, if iPhone speaks, could you please introduce yourself?
Hello?
Yes. Are you iPhone? Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, yeah, I'm not introducing myself. It's anonymous.
Uh, I'm sorry, it's a public hearing.
Okay, Holly.
Okay, Bill Padusha. Anyways, I just want to say one thing, one thing.
If you don't identify yourself, I'm not going to speak.
That's not going to be asked, or that's not.
Holly, is it you? Holly, you're allowing me to speak inside the car. Yes, is she identifying herself?
Hello?
Is it Holly? Is this you?
I want to say something about the water overlays. You're devaluing everyone's property that you put water overlays over. Nobody is going to want to buy a piece of land that has a water overlay on it.
I don't want to hear somebody that won't identify themselves.
Holly McGee.
Okay, then turn it back on.
Okay.
Why is that so freaking hard?
Because you said already I couldn't speak twice, obviously.
Because we also, then, after you left, said people could speak for a second time.
Well, why would I stay when, first of all, you said nobody can speak again? Why would I stay? It's a public hearing. You obviously don't want to hear what people have to say. I don't know what you're saying, because you're all talking at the same time.
I like to be, I'm just going to start time, you're there right now. Speak.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to say that the water overlays on everyone's property that you've put those on, no one is going to want to buy that piece of land ever. Like, why would anybody buy a piece of property with a water overlay on it? You can't do anything with it at all. So there, that's what I had to say. That's what I wanted to add when I left the meeting, because I because you said nobody could talk and you said I can't email you because apparently my emails are too scary for you or something. I don't know. Or you're just like too worried that I might tell the truth in my emails? So I guess that's why I'm not allowed to talk or email. I don't know. But anyway, so that's all I wanted to say, is that the water overlays are devaluing everybody's property and you've got them over, like, more than half the town. That's it. Thank you.
I see, um, I can't read it.
Teresa.
Teresa? Teresa, we're unmuting you. Would you please identify yourself?
Hi, this is Teresa Mix. And, um, I just wanted to say that, um, my family has owned and paid property tax since the beginning of Caroline time. Um, I did see that the lot size requirement has been changed for everyone except those in the Ag District. Um, in other words, farmers. Um, farmers don't have pensions, by the way. Um, if they need to sell some of their land to survive or even to retire, um, the potential for a a good sale for them is pretty much out the window with the the proposed zoning plan. Um, so it just feels like we're discriminating against farmers. And this whole thing is at the expense of those who built Caroline. I'm against zoning, obviously. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Pete?
Uh, this is all a cop. Yeah, this is off the cuff, just a couple of different reactions to what's been said. One of the previous speakers was appalled that something or other, I guess, some of the pheromones with with which we oppose zoning. I mean, we're kind of appalled at the whole notion of zoning, so that ought to kind of be washed. I don't know what that's all about. And if, as she stated, that there were untruths told tonight, I recognize Jeanne position you're in, where you don't really can comment out of public hearing. But the speaker who alleged that they're untrue ought to be able to make at least one or two of them. If so, we'd have something to possibly rebut in the next meeting. Something else that changed. I also realized that this is the end of the process for you guys. And I I don't expect any substantial changes being made to the draft. And we've been working on it for 15 months. We're going to have a crack at the town board, which we're certainly going to take that crack when the time comes. But what one thing I do want to go back to, there is a brief mention made, one of the footnotes in the report, about how the the constitution of the zoning commission has changed over time, as people were added and people resigned and so forth. And I I remember quite specifically back in the spring, several of us, and I think I was one of them, urging that a farmer be appointed, and a businessperson be appointed, to give a little bit more variety, a little bit more perspective perhaps to the zoning commission as they think of these other things. I mean, what John said about the business people is absolutely right, in my view. This, it just seems as though a requirement for being on the zoning com- commission was that you be a priori in favor of zoning now. Yeah, that was the town board's wishes, but I I don't know. It just, that's something that just didn't step right with a lot of us, you know? I mean, if the commission is to investigate what is best for the town in terms of zoning, within the realm of possibilities, some of those possibilities would be no built, you know? Best for the town is not zoning. It seems as though the potential for that conclusion was precluded by the town board when they made the appointments. And and that's not John's fault for because that, that's how board they made that choice, not you guys. But it 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 is the cause of some of these. Bruce, do I have any more time left? I am kind of rambling.
Minute thirteen.
Minute thirteen, well. This is my ultimate chance to speak to you guys. I've temporarily run out of stuff to say. I hope I can make a better deal of it. Next. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, uh, I iPhone could lower your hand. And I don't think I'd see anyone else's hand up. I will just ask people, um, to look at pages, if you're going to go out and look at this again in the future and come back with our meeting, please look at pages 51 and 52, which explains how developing units are allocated. And there's a good uh, Reader's Aid box there that might be something that people would want to look at. Um, is there anything else that somebody on the commission would like to suggest that people look at? Yes?
I would like to suggest that if you're going to come and make comments, that you read the new draft, because, you know, relating to the old draft is is all, we made a lot. You know, relating to the old draft is is all we made a lot of changes and you really need to read into that. To be able to come and speak more.
Also on page thirteen, there are. In the report itself, United with ballpark, it lists. Some, I think. Twenty changes that were made from original, recurring to into this. So that would give people a quick chance to look at something. Anyone else?
Gene, I have a legal question. I hope that you could answer. If you are, aren't you duty bound, legally bound, if you advertise a public hearing between six o'clock and nine o'clock? Aren't you legally bound to keep that public hearing open that entire time?
Yes, I am.
And take counts. So if you restrict people from speaking again, you're basically saying we have to sit in silence until nine o'clock.
Our attorneys. I'm going to answer it now. Our attorneys have quoted said it is completely reasonable to limit the amount of time per person. And to allow people to submit. Comments in writing.
So you have to stay here till nine o'clock?
I'm I'm delighted to stay here tonight.
And and not and not let anybody speak because everybody used up their time.
Talking, kill for you, talk amongst yourselves. I'm just not counting it as a. I'm not counting this.
Can I, can I just raise this?
No.
Why don't you just allow people?
Read this by what we as a zoning commission have decided.
And my question is, are you legally bound to let people speak if there's time left?
No. No, I'm not. So and we made them all.
I think you are. Question with the lawyer was, I think we looked at the time of four minutes and that's probably true, but it wasn't promised by the end of what if nobody's speaking, guessing that wasn't asked. Conversation between ourselves.
He'll put a timeline on to to allow everybody to have a chance to speak. That's the whole point of the time.
Yes, it is.
Not to restrict. People's ability to speak.
I don't want to hear.
At least to bring the speech, right? Everybody, I think. He has got a point there.
I don't think there's anybody else has their hand up. There are people here who have not spoken. Happy to hear from people who haven't spoken. Or people who have spoken once.
Well, I'll speak if nobody else.
Please identify yourself and speak.
Do I need to sign it?
If there's a piece of paper right here. And I will look at the sign within. Probably go to the back now because I think the front is my fault. Thank you, sir. Russell Christel.
So I don't have anything prepared, but I can just speak out of concerns and do the whole thing and. The lot size is a huge one for me, being a being a farmer. I think it's the most irresponsible thing I've ever heard. To say that we have to have two, even two acre or three acre lot sizes. I think I'm good farmland. I don't even want to see a house. I don't want to see a house. I'm good farming because I think. That this better valley ground should be in production, whether it's feeding animals that are going, you know, so. I, but I don't need zoning to tell me, you know, that whether a house can be built somewhere or whether it can't, you know? I mean, if. If we have to sell a lot to keep, to help keep the bills paid, to keep the whole rest of the farm going, I don't want to be told that I can't. And these water overlays, I'm going to look into that and I'll make further comments later after I. After I read the new. Draft, which I haven't done yet. I've. Spent a fair amount of time working and feeding animals and I'm tired and I just don't have time, but. We're struggling, you know, we're barely. We can't pay all the bills, you know, so it's like we're picking and choosing and we're trying to get through and. And just to add any more of this is just so frustrating. It's. It's. It's very discouraging, you know, and. I don't. I don't want to move to a different part of the country because I like it here, but. You know, this is the kind of thing that could just drive a lot of us away. And if you're gonna. Want to keep open fields and stuff, there aren't very many of us left that can do that. So. You know, I'm I'm so against it, I can't even begin to tell you. Anyway, thanks for listening to me.
Thank you. And please do look at page fifty-one and fifty-two about the lots. Um. Someone else, sir? Do I have to come up? No, you can speak right there.
Okay.
You won't be on camera, but other than that.
Okay, I don't know that I need to be on camera. One question that was.
I'm sorry, who is this? Please, I didn't get catch the name.
I'm sorry, it's Edie Spaulding.
Oh, Edie again. Okay. Hi, Edie, this is Bill.
Hi. Has that be anybody done an inventory of how many acres of state land, agricultural land, possible building sites? Farmland, farmland that can be potentially developed, farmlands that first that can't be developed, sidehill and. You know, that sort of thing. Has anybody looked at any of that?
Edie, I'll talk with you after the meeting about it. I can't lose time in this meeting.
Okay. Okay.
Anyone else?
So now we said. Cindy?
Cindy? Oh, Cindy, I'm sorry, I didn't see Cindy's hand up on the screen. I didn't bring my correct glasses, so seeing that far right now is not working. Cindy, would you please give me your last name and seat?
Kennell, K E N N E L L.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I guess the only thing I really want to point out in the big scheme of things, if this idea of zoning. If for the past two hundred years, if this was put through years ago. Most of us would not have the privilege of living here today. And I want people to think long and hard about that, that we have a privilege that we seem quite willing to take away from others. And that is very concerning to me. We all, we've all enjoyed the rights and the privileges of being here. But now we feel that it's. We don't want anyone else to share the same. And that morally, to me, does not seem seem appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else?
You don't serenade us.
So you need to sit here for another hour and twenty minutes.
I didn't.
Silence.
I I didn't, no.
You know, I think the commission needs to change their alleged rules about how you conduct this meeting. I just.
I took a motion from.
Very absurd.
Oh, I've been to that and I don't like it. I took a motion before from someone on the board. If anyone else wants to make a motion, they can. I am sticking with the rules as we make them. I don't make the rule for the chair. The board makes the rules. So if anyone wants to offer another amendment or a motion, they can. I'm not doing that.
She died in silence.
Yes?
We make a. Voices on it, and somebody has something constructive to say. Because I'm not sure, do you know for sure that it is legal, he's there? And now. There's anything?
From what I, from my. My current office, the attorney's time.
Okay, I don't want to make that mistake even though I'm playing this role.
And the reason you hold the meeting open is if someone can't edit the law, for instance, because it's advertised as being open until nine. I think it's on page. I'm not going to avoid you going to speak. I'm considering giving you a dollar if you speak.
You're done?
You are?
I'm just listening.
Well, it's so exciting, yeah.
Your time is up.
I don't know. There are a few people on Zoom who are a little fast open. Okay, yes?
Do I have your individual name?
My full maiden name is Jean, N A R Y. And as in Mary. McTheaters, M C. Faculty. As in Peter, H E S and Thomas. E R S, as in Sam.
Gene, this is Bill.
Yes?
I may have missed it in your intro. I just want to make sure it's clear to everyone there because you talked about, you know, dropping comments off at the town hall or giving them a mark there or mailing them in. But email is a perfectly viable option, and I think to the town clerk would actually probably be the best. Address, which is available on the town website. But yeah, electronic copies are are very nice to have.
Exactly. On the the public hearing, it's noted that things should go by, you know, to the town court, not to me, to the town court and by March third. And I'll repeat for others again what I said before, how this wraps up. We listen to what you have to say. We go back and look at. If we're going to make changes to the document based on what we heard you say tonight, or in writing, or on the twenty-eighth. If we make changes, we then we work together and make sure the changes are accurate. Once we have done that, we vote on whether to remove the document. To the to the board. And this document, as I said, has a has a lead-in of about. Seventeen pages, which is sort of the report. And then it has the document itself of the draft law. And. So I think we're hopeful that we'll be able to complete our work in March. Which will be. The twenty-fifth month that we've been working on this. Because we started in March of twenty twenty-one.
It did bring some photocopies over here.
Yeah, there are photocopies. Thank you, I'm glad people know that.
This copy, I don't think the whole thing.
This copy, I don't need the whole thing. Most of my, I pull on part of it. We can learn it again.
Oh, y'all have a good evening.
Ninety.
I'm gonna pack it in. We'll see from spot. Okay, thank you.
You're not going all the way back to this point, are you?
No.
Good.
Going back to my house.
Edie, if you gave me your email, I will tell you about the report.
Okay, it's edid. At edid.com.
Okay.
And I thank you all for doing us, even though I don't agree with it, I thank you all for doing it.
Thank you, I'm, I'm considering it that I get to go straight to heaven.
Why do you think?
I get to go straight to heaven, there's no purgatory for it.
I can tell you, there's no way I would sit, could sit there.
Well, you know, yeah.
Nobody, but you guys have a good evening.
You too.
How we got out there?
Seattle. You're still here. He's a little bit. What if I will not? He's all four inch length. So he really speaks. The fourth floor, which, or which, or the fourth floor.
Did you get them all just great to the edge of the table?
Yeah, that's, that's not long, but you know, you want to play the corners and you have to rush it can. Some would be the middle, but you know, trying to actually hit the edge is, uh, you have, unless you. But you got a lot of new calls.
Thank you so much.
Did we, you know, we heard, if you really want to, you could tap on the back there. So I don't know, does it hear a little more this, this guy here? And the first one is, where, where's the, where's the orange? I just started trying. But I don't know, he's like game table, he's not, but he's playing basketball. Actually, more on shoes. You can see your trust there orbiting which is. Well. I don't see any, there's no, you keep this for four years. Wasn't that the head of the series, like, oh, would you last persistent? Everybody has, which is probably. You know, I think I'm. Oh, you know. Who the, who changed? Yeah, who's the? But yeah. The friends always gets. We're just here to play, uh, let's start here. I did not. I'm gonna go bring this in.
What's it like then?
Terrible. Draining on ice. It's not snowing.
Okay, my good lucks. Yeah, hopefully it goes good. Yeah. I'll bring you on this. Would you, would you think this? You got. I've been watching today. Still raining?
Dan Mark said it was horrible.
Still raining out there?
Rain. And icy.
Raining on top of ice and snow. I put salt down the stuff.
I hope it's on by morning. Kind of hope it's like, uh, feeding that right here.
But I think it's supposed to get wetter, you know, warmer.
It's supposed to be a more, yeah. Not supposed to be a well created sentence.
I was glad to see snow back on the ground. My dog's been getting checked, so.
I have a friend who's in the house, yes, he's selling white as summer chicken.
Oh, really?
Any chicken. Yeah, or a possum, too. Thank you a lot, Shex, it's Jeff Hardy, Ray. But I'm just, I'm. I mean, I'm gonna be there. She was, she was really. It's.
I don't know if you can hear me, but, uh, the sound is cut off again.
Hi, Michelle. Everybody else? I, I didn't mute the chat at all because nobody is like speaking. And there's, there's a lot of chatter here, so I'm gonna leave it muted. But we got someone.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm gonna chase you. Unless there's an extra circumstances. Wait, okay, wait, let me get this straight now. You're giving me lease on life here. So.
You don't have to worry about it, you can catch a piece and we'll read it.
But then, but like, you have a reasonable amount of time to stop. That's it, it means two dangers.
Yeah.
You know, that's, so the people can really. Can get away with it.
Well, driveway is terrible. They're terrible, I don't know, I didn't go out.
They're not gonna.
I just put some, oh, on the road.
Are they horse lancers?
Not, pretty similar, not like cars.
Slushy.
No, you, I just, you're trying to get this deeper. So when you just, uh, you know, I think it's about things, about the problems. But looking at incentive ice cream, we write a whole lot. Cheers. It's possible, yeah.
Oh, for sure.
You know, my, um, I think my ex-wife, brother, small town, they have, you know, they're pretty prosperous, cover of Donald Trump, I get, all right, um, he told me this is twenty some years ago, he probably saying thing you said. He said, you have fifty six people in forty, he's probably going to buy another fifty or fifty five, who will act. They're totally going to buy a baby, more than eight. Oh, well, and try it down with April. Like, you, you get that response, my. You know, plan out to also stay, they, I think, of the cars for. They're not gonna want me to chase it or license by land. Obviously, there's more going on. They don't mean there's, it's, it's fine, but seeing that I sell a car that they take out on a centering road, towards first road, over like your own street. Could be, exactly, there's always going to be a lot of. Fear of higher. But then going eighty miles per hour, there's a bunch of cars, you know, that, you know, they, they created this. It's, it's not, it's not. Drive as well, it's like safety is like our big priority. Or if you're trying to make a movie. They, that has, I remember saying, I had to be running, chasing, stuff, you know. What says that? See, they're being more than that. So it was, it was a long process. So, uh, the, you start off with the agility test. What? And agility test.
Oh.
And then you do the print exam. They have to go through, what's your background test, you have polygraph, uh, and you like fingerprinted it. Really, their own background check where they talk to all your neighbors. It's their old friends.
Yeah, actually, yeah.
Because, you know, this money has a lot going on, even their life. They're not fit for the job. What about that last thing?
Compromised or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Oh, a good part of the building.
That's a lot.
I wouldn't want. Sure, that here.
It's, it's been, it's not bad, it's not any.
Yeah, but it is a.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so after.
No, that kind of wondering order, so something you get. They do with the protective. The only good thing about it. But these, all initially sound good.
Oh, that's very remarkable, right? Certainly, because Marshall's dad is a policeman, so. But it's like a cricket, right? If we were peace officers, we couldn't really carry.
Well, and so, if, if you're off duty, like, when there's a crime being committed, and it's on the degree of, uh, yeah, intervention.
If someone's life is in danger, we're expected to intervene. If it's simple, like, larceny, where someone steals a loaf of bread, we're not gonna.
A lot of people, but I mean, if, if felony, I mean, are you perfectly intervened in any felony?
Yeah, especially if someone's life's in danger. Because they, I think they prefer to, more or less, you know, report it because we're, we're off duty. Unless it ends with their family, their neighbor, you know, family, friends, that's what happens.
Well, it's probably a steep cliff, oh, a lot of times, those students retired as a city cop. You know, you need to tell her, you know, it's one of the places you can take that vacation. So, you're off duty, so you're having a couple of drinks, something like that. You don't say you're having more than a couple because your wife is trying to drive you home, so you're too, you know, operating, that's no better than off duty.
But then, you know, if you're in a spot, I mean, you have to, well, it's, 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 well, and if you intervene, and if something goes sideways.
Who's ever going to ask you, say, you've been rich, or, so how do you defend against that? Which is crazy, you know?
So, as like intervening, you know?
Yeah, I mean, if, you know, I mean, you're off duty, you found it. It's a bad shit start, exactly. Well, I mean, you got, you got such a, two of you, you get, you.
So, I don't, I don't wear this off duty, or, so then I do carry off duty.
Yeah, but I'm afraid of some, they do, you know, then, you know, say you were a bee. And you hit the guy, what would you argue? First of all, A, beach, first of B, you'd be able to purchase bees, and, and, but you go to the front. But you call the person, that, well, you hit him too hard, but the guy's got a weak heart, and that will, that will.
So, you, yeah, so it's, you're, you're saying, well, you're the bar, and maybe the officer is off of these drinkings, and, and something happens. And this is sort of what happens to me, the officer, I mean, like, this bar fighter. So, if, if it's getting out of hand, you intervene, stop it. It's more or less up to your discretion at that point, I mean, you don't have to, like, say, like, exactly. Because if I'm in an open state, I'm not expected really there to intervene. But, you could use reasonable force to restrain that person, if you have the right equipment, that. If you're, you know, just off duty, the guard, if you're that handcuffs on your, if thing, well, it's like. Yeah, yeah. Put yourself at the, well, you put that point because, so that's, that's funny. Call, because you're a better witness. And if you don't have handcuffs.
Yeah.
You're a little skinny, and, you know, it's like, I'm dangerous, fighting that paper, you know, if you're handcuffed, it's hard to really. I mean, it's not for you. With the, we're, this is not, this is not.
People back off, well, they're gonna be.
Yeah, you can see that. Yeah, really, I'm just trying to play close, and make that, uh, you know, and then it's, you know. But the, the, because after you, that, you're, you're in the head, and so, you're just like, five months, there's a class, like, everything.
If you sit and walk down the camera, if you stand over there and you don't see the camera. Okay, so can people on Zoom here as well?
Yes, I can.
Okay. I just print this over. I'll have to find a piece of paper. I'm sorry, I'm not reading your name. I'm Crystal. Crystal, Crystal. So there's a lot of families that have grown up in this town. I grew up in this town. Thirty-eight years old, I grew up in this town. Growing up in this town, everybody was together. This town doesn't need zoning permit. We need this town to come back together. We need places and things for our children now to be able to do. We have to come out of this town just to go to Brighton, Grattan, Richberg, North Valley, Ithaca, to even have food. Yeah, we have the damn New York. It's great. Great food. We have to travel away. There's nothing for our children to do, teenagers. When we were teenagers and kids, we had skate park over here. It was, this community was so much more together. We don't even have an active EMS in this town. We need to have zoning in here. We don't even have it now. Where, what's, what's gonna happen then? There's a lot of things that have to happen back in this town before you think so much to go back there. At all, and I don't think we need zoning at all. But apparently, we can see things that we do. But I, I'm within those zoning and there's a lot of things that may be put back together in this town as a community. Because right now, I don't feel that we should have it because of when we want to try to have things in here, now you guys are stepping in with a zoning. Being pushed, it doesn't need to be in here. Thank you very much, Crystal. So I couldn't read your name, but as I said, it was a real license. And Peter, do you like this? No, that's my daughter and her friend. So like, when we have nothing to do in this town, I have a million teenagers at my house because if I try to do anything in this town, we don't have anything to do in this town. So that's why we don't need zoning. We need to be able to have things in this town. I think two or thirteen. I mean, what teenagers want to come to is the only condition here, right? Because there's nothing that we can do. I did remind, yeah, there's just nothing to do in your life, teenagers. They, they became part of businesses. We say hi on an explorer's pole. To do things there. I started bringing in the zoning, that kind of. It's gonna be, it's not, it's gonna appear. Because I got the party off at my house, too. So Crystal, what's your address? Thirty-two, two, Sable Road, I think, up there. She's been in the family for many, many years.
You.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. It is now nine o'clock. We're gonna close this hearing. I want to remind people that we have another hearing on Tuesday, February twenty eighth, at the Burton Dale Fire Hall, again from six to nine P M. And please consider sending something in and writing to the town clerk, either in mail, dropping in the town clerk's office, or sending it by email to the town court by March third. And thank you to everyone who spoke tonight. Please ask your friends to come and participate. Thank you.